And remain standing for the pledge allegiance by Commissioner Harris. Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, you're the prince of peace, our Savior, many, many names. But this time of the year, Lord, you are the reason that we celebrate this season. Lord, just ask you to be with all these families through this holiday season. Lord, just to remind us that some people there that may just need a phone call or just a visit to sit and talk. Especially somebody that may have lost a spouse during this past year and experienced the holiday season for the first time without them.
Bless you.
Lord, just thank you for reminding us of that. Lord, just thank you for blessing us in so many ways. Thank you for the blessing of Montgomery County and our county employees and this county commission. We do this, Lord, in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, Florence. Roll call.
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Chairman Dean is absent. Commissioner Walker?
Present.
Commissioner Sankey?
Present.
Vice Chairman Singleton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, public comments, we've had two, the sign of Rondricus Briggs and Levi Gillyard. Are y'all together or y'all separate? Separate, okay. Mr. Briggs, you're first. We have three minutes and if you would, out of respect for everybody's time, try to hold it to those three minutes.
Good morning, y'all. How y'all doing today?
Good morning, sir.
My name is Rondricus Briggs. I'm a native here in the city of Montgomery, Alabama. I'm faced with a situation that I want to turn a negative into a positive. Back on Halloween, two of my brothers were killed in the Ridgecrest area. Although they were both equally important to me, one of my brothers, El Rico Briggs, he was a prominent member of this community. He served in the DOC. He was a lieutenant there. And he was also a staff sergeant in the Army, the National Guard. And he was just there trying to help our other little brother with some domestic issues. And the people came and they decided that they wanted the end, they wanted to retaliate to both of them in violence. And both of my brothers ended up losing their lives on that day. My brother Rico fought for his life until the 18th of November. Future just shattered. He had a lot of great things going on for himself and I personally know that it was a shame for him to be caught up in something like that. But for the both of them, I want, at the time I was living in Memphis, Tennessee, I had been working with this trucking company and traveling across country. But I just feel compelled to just come home and I want to just serve my community in a totally different way to honor both of their lives. And right now, I'm getting ready to just basically just do anything that I can possible to promote peace and social justice among the people here in this city, in the county as well. And I would just really, really like you guys to just show a little support to that, to the cause. It'll be basically talking about nonviolence and I want to be an advocate to help people think of better ways to solve their differences. So that's how I would like to honor my brothers with you all's help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have questions or anything? Brother Levi?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I brought someone here. She'll introduce herself by telling her name.
Yes, my name is Betty Ship.
Betty Ship. How old were you when I was mentoring you?
Well, from the beginning of 10 to 14.
10 to 14. The reason why I'm bringing her is because I want people to know that the work that's being done through Think Big is bigger than me as an individual and is definitely not an event, a one-time thing. Betty, what happened to you that led to your going to prison?
Well, at the age of 14, I was with some people who committed a murder.
Betty, can you move up to the mic a little bit?
At the age of, I'm sorry, at the age of 14, I was with some people who went to, and I went to prison for murder. And now I feel real broken and I would love to give back to society some type of way.
And the reason why she's here today is because I went to eat one day about two, three weeks ago at the Waffle House downtown. And she was just exuberant when I walked in. And I want to tell you, my heart was filled with joy to see her on a job and trying to regroup. And I'm telling you that this is just one example of the number of lives that has been impacted by Think Big over the last 30 years. And while I told Rondricus not to mention my name, I need you to know that I was mentoring Rondricus since he was in middle school. So Think Big is not a one-event situation. It's a process that goes through a lifetime. And all I can say is that because of my daughter, who's a lieutenant colonel in the Space Force, and Colonel Mensah, in 2022, we're going to take Think Big to a new level. And I'm just asking for you all's support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brother Levi. Thank you, Betty. And Mr. Briggs, consultances for your family. At this time of the year, I know it's going to be a little tougher this year for you. There's a lot of opportunities for you to make a difference here. And I hope you, I'd be glad to talk with you after this is over by our mentoring program we do for you. That's my child. Any of those, I'll hang around a little bit if you want to come down and talk and we'll discuss some ways that you can make an impact here in Montgomery like you want to make. So, all right. Florence?
We'll consider the minutes of the regular meeting of December 7th, 2021.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider accounts. Excuse me.
Yeah, I got to do that too.
I'm not getting it.
Did it come up yet?
No.
Are you in the, is everybody in the formal?
Formal session?
Session.
You may have to log out and log back in.
Oh, really?
Do you tell me to log out and log in?
Yes, before we, we're just going to refresh.
A refresh button? While she's doing that, I'll give you a quick update on Elton. He's doing much, much better. I think most of us have talked to him this week and he probably could have been here today. But suggested maybe just get a little more rest and be ready to go start in the new year. So I fully expect him to be back full strength in January. But he appreciates all the calls and the cards or whatever you've done to encourage him. His phone contacts, for some reason, are, have, he's lost them somehow. Rodney may need to get you involved to get them back for him somehow. But so if he hasn't called you back or hasn't responded to your texts, you might want to put your name down there when you text him or something to say, hey, this is Doug. So he'll know who's texting him. So, okay. We got a second, Dan. Mood? Who was second? Rhonda? Okay, nearby. Okay. Florence, we're good.
Consider accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
Move for approval.
Second. Any objection? So ordered.
Consider items three through six in an omnibus vote.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to get clarification from your attorney on the second set of items for omnibus. With this, we're voting to change polling places. Like there's four or five of them. Can they be on the bus?
I prefer not to, frankly.
Let's go. Let's do one individually.
I don't think there's a problem with three, four, five.
Consider a resolution approving relocation of polling place 206 in Montgomery County Commission District Two.
Move for approval. Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider resolution approving relocation of polling place 208 in Montgomery County Commission District Two.
Move for approval.
Second. Any objection? So ordered.
Consider resolution approving relocation of polling place 304 in Montgomery County Commission District Three.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered. Second. Was it you second?
Oh, it is second. Waiting on the wrong.
My mind still says waiting on second. I got moved by Rhonda Walker.
I said it, but I didn't.
Hit it again.
It's not, I don't know, it's not on. This chair, keep going down. Yeah, he won't go. I can't second again. I, it's second, it won't give me the vote. I second, it won't give me the vote. It's just, it's got a blank.
Hold on, is yours?
Second, you want me to second?
Hit it, just see what happens.
Okay, it worked.
Okay, there you go.
All right, so I say a second.
Everybody do four. Dan's on there. Okay, we're good. Okay.
Consider a resolution approving relocation of polling place 502 in Montgomery County Commission District Five.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
You moved. I seconded.
What's wrong with you?
Do you, yeah, there we go.
Consider a resolution approving relocation of polling place 511 in Montgomery County Commission District Five.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a memorandum of understanding to reimburse the administrative office of courts for certain salary and fringe benefits paid by AOC for a full-time court referee.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a contract with the Crosby Drinkard Group for 2022 governmental affairs, representation, and consulting services.
Move for approval. Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider to recognize and deny a claim regarding Willie McLean.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider to recognize and deny a claim regarding Robin Baldwin.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies.
Move for approval. Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a bid award to Stevens Construction and Concrete to furnish crushed stone for the engineering department.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a bid award to Drug Testing Program Management for Drug Lab Services for Community Corrections.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider hiring an IT specialist network infrastructure at pay grade A11, step six.
So moved.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for the county commission for a county attorney.
So moved.
I second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for the detention facility for corrections officer trainee.
So moved.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for the engineering department for a master auto mechanic.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider an unbudgeted position fill request for information systems for an IT specialist systems.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for the sheriff's office for a deputy sheriff trainee.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for the youth facility detention for a juvenile detention officer.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider travel training requests for appraisal, the detention facility, and engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
We have a waived rule item to consider, a resolution declaring January 9th, 2022 in Montgomery County as Reverend Gary Porter Burton Day.
Mr. Chairman, I have no objection to this waived rule item. I move for approval.
I second.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
That's all of our items.
Okay. Mr. Attorney?
No, sir.
Mr. Deputy Administrator?
Just to give you an update, ERA is still setting up for ERA Two. They're expecting that payment should be rolling out early next week. And I'd just like to take time to thank all of the departments from across the county for helping us coordinate and quickly execute our employee appreciation luncheon on last Thursday. Chappies provided us via, you know, our contract with 600, about 600 lunches. And Chappies personnel brought everything in, delivered everything swiftly. They had a person specifically assigned to section off lunches. And I am happy, and it was a little fast and furious at one point to report that every department showed up, they picked up their lunches. A lot of them were early, but everybody picked them up and we had a good time. And I think we were done about 11:30 with everybody having picked up their lunches. So I hope that everybody enjoyed it. And, but I just appreciate Commissioners Sankey and Walker for coming in and showing up and taking pictures and helping us out. But just like to take time to thank you all, thank all the departments, and thank Chappies.
Thank you and Florence and the staff for administering and coordinating all of that. So thank y'all. Mr. Harris, you always last every meeting and we always steal your thunder. So today, the end of the year, you get to go first.
Don't have a whole lot of thunder. First of all, I'd like to express and let everybody know that my thoughts and prayers have been with our chairman. He's been in my prayers constantly and obviously paying off. He's in good spirits and hopefully he'll be back with us at our next meeting. Secondly, I really would like to wish you all a happy, happy holiday season and a merry, merry, merry Christmas. This is the season for giving. This is also the season for remembering. Giving and forgiving. Given to us on Christmas a long time ago was really our source of salvation and our, our way to back into good graces with our Lord and Savior. And that's what should be on our mind, I think, this season. I'd like to thank all of the employees for all that you've done for Montgomery County and wish you and your family well. All news is not good news, however. I learned midweek that we were losing Holly, Everett, our risk manager. Holly, you are truly going to be missed. Before you came, I always had questions about risk management and the role that it played with Montgomery County. You came in and really showed everyone what a risk management department should be doing and what a risk manager should be about. We were blessed to have you. I know that that's a great opportunity that you're leaving for and I can't really blame you for that. But believe me, you're going to be missed and don't be a stranger.
I enjoyed getting to hand out the Chappies lunches on last week and seeing the employees, a lot of the employees that we don't see on a regular basis. And I'm so appreciative of the team that we have at Montgomery County. We have had a lot of changes over the past year. Employees moving on, retiring or changing positions. And we've got some new people on board on the county team. And just thank you so much. It's been a good year. It's been a hard year. It's been a different year. It's had its challenges. But we've had, you know, we've had a lot of victories and we've shown in Montgomery County how able we are to, to do our jobs and to serve the people of Montgomery County. And that is done is you guys. It's not, it's not those of us up here. We have a role. But you're the ones that are working every day to keep Montgomery in motion and thank you so much for that. And I echo Commissioner Harris's comments about Holly. Yeah, I mean, we've had some stings this year with people that have moved on to other opportunities. And this is certainly another one that stings. But we are happy for you and we value and deeply appreciate the hard, hard work you have put in to your job here over the time that you've been here. And you have, you have made a lasting impact and we know that that will continue and good things are ahead for you. And as we go into this last couple of weeks of the year and certainly the Christmas celebration this week, I'm, I'm always reminded to show the grace that has been shown to me because incredible, unmerited grace and favor is poured out on me by my Lord. incredible, unmerited grace and favor is poured out on me by my Lord and Savior. And my role on earth is to then in turn glorify Him through showing that same grace and favor to other people. So I am reminded to do that, especially the people who are hurting and any of us who have experienced loss and grief. It's magnified this time of year. And we know that the mental health issues that this last year and a half brought on are magnifying that pain even more. So reach out to people, especially those people who are, who live alone, uh and and just show them your love. But I appreciate all of you and hope you have a very merry Christmas and enjoy your friends and your families and just the the beauty of this season. Thank you.
Let the church say amen. Yes, um to the young lady that came with Mr. Gilliard, thank you for for coming and sharing your story. Please keep the faith and stay encouraged. And I want to talk to you before you leave, please. Mr. Briggs? My condolences uh to you and your family as well. And we appreciate you sharing your personal tragedy and the pain that you suffered. And I just want to encourage you, and I thank you for turning that pain into a cause as it relates to crime and social justice issues. So uh I know the Commissioner, the chairman, wants to speak with you, but I'd like to speak with you, too. Okay, God bless you. And Holly? Well, you say you're just going to be up in Lee County, just a little short hop and skip away. And I do have a few friends up in Lee County, and I know you about to make Reverend Clifford Jones a little bit more influential, because you know him as well. And we appreciate everything you've done. Thank you for getting my insurance straight before you left here. I really appreciate that. I think you put me on a better path as it relates to the coverage that you encouraged me to accept. And to each of you, uh I pray that you have a safe and enjoy this enjoyable holiday season and just keep the the same love and and joy. It's it's interesting how we just love a little bit more during this time of the year, and I don't know why we can't continue it all year long. So let's just continue that same love and joy, and may the peace of God be with each of you for the coming year. God bless you.
I'd be glad when Chairman Dean gets back because Commissioner Harris did such a great job of tickling everything I wanted to say. And so I know how you feel with every meeting when I'm the last or he's the last one. And uh and then now I hear Commissioner Walker and Commissioner Sankey go ahead of me. So I'd be glad when Chairman Dean gets back and I get to speak first and and throw out all these great things. But Holly, again, thank you so very much. When I heard that you made the final three, I made a few calls to Lee County to try to sabotage you. And my reputation over there and your abilities won out at the end. So uh we're sure going to miss you. You've done a wonderful job here with us, and we're going to miss you. And again, please stay in touch, and we'll be in touch with you. And everybody else, a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and appreciate each and every one of you. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.